Thank you, Kathy. It is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafer, the Chair of the Board, and we will now start a meeting with the roll call of all of our members that are present today. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Avery.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel. Mr. Halipka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGuinness.
Aye.
Mr. Perlow.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren. Mrs. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, will you please join me in saying a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, please remember to unmute yourself when you're not speaking and to turn your microphones on when you are speaking, not just for the benefit of the people in the room, but for the people that are, the two people that are watching on TV. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agendas published?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the February 23, 2023 email, you received draft minutes from the February 16 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to look over the draft minutes? Are there any questions or changes? If not, may I accept a motion to accept the minutes? Thank you.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. First on our agenda is an introduction of the Sparrows Point Country Club Growth Allocation Request from the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area. Ms. Regina Esslinger from the Department of Environmental Protections and Sustainability and Patricia Malone, the representative for the project, are here with us this evening to present the board. First, please let me introduce Ms. Esslinger. Thank you for coming this evening.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Regina Esslinger. I'm with the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability. And this afternoon, I'm going to do two things. I'm going to go over the growth allocation process and then I'm going to give you the Growth Allocation Review Committee recommendations.
So first off, we have a map that shows you a general representation of where the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area is in Baltimore County. The county's critical area law has been in effect since 1988. It is a state law that is implemented through local regulations. At the time, the critical area was adopted in 1988. The county was mandated to map all lands in the critical area into one of three land use categories. So the first category, and it was based on what existed on the ground as of December 1, 1985. So the first category, Resource Conservation Areas, or RCA's, are areas that are primarily nature or resource utilization dominated. So agriculture, forest, wetlands, barren land, open space, that sort of thing. Could also be very low-density residential. The second category, Limited Development Areas, or LDA, are areas that are, that were developed in low to moderate intensity, primarily residential, with, at the time of the mapping, a density of one unit per five acres up to four units an acre. They had to have water or sewer. There may be some small commercial areas incorporated in limited development areas. Then the third category, Intensely Developed Areas, or IDAs, are areas that are primarily commercial, industrial, institutional, or higher-density residential. At the time of mapping, they had to have at least four dwelling use, four dwelling units an acre. They had to have at least three dwelling uni, I'm sorry, four dwelling units an acre and public water and sewer. So the state critical area regulations allow us to create new LDAs or IDAs by reclassifying the land. And that's what's called a growth allocation. Now, the county was given, back in 1988, a total of 462 acres that could be used for growth allocation. That came from 5% of the county's total RCA acreage, and it's a finite amount. So once it's gone, it's gone. There's no more left. As of today, we have 79.9 acres of growth allocation left. There are 44.66 acres of RCA that can be used to go up to either LDA or straight up to IDA. We have 35.24 acres in our LDA pot that can be used to convert up to IDA land. So Article 32 Title IX of the county code outlines the county's growth allocation process and requirements. The county also adopted regulations for how to evaluate growth allocation requests. So the evaluation includes several things that we have to look at. We have to look at natural resource management and protection. We have to look at the quality of design, location, and off-site community enhancement. So the process, the, the process requires, the first step is a Growth Allocation Review Committee. So once DEPS has received a growth allocation application and we've determined it's complete, we submit it to the Growth Allocation Review Committee, the GARC, as we call it. The GARC is comprised of one member from each of the following county departments: DEPS, Planning, PAI, Public Works and Transportation, Rec and Parks, and Economic and Workforce Development. So the Growth Allocation Committee performs a technical review of the entire application and we put together a recommendation on whether we think you all should approve or should, should forward the recommendation to the Board of Appeals. The, the third step is that then it is up to the planning board to review the application, consider the GARC recommendations, and make a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Step four, Board of Appeals, they have to vote to approve or deny the application request. If the planning, if the Board of Appeals approves the growth allocation, then it goes to the state, to the Critical Area Commission. It is then a final decision the Critical Area Commission makes on whether to approve or deny the growth allocation request. Any questions so far? No? Okay, so let me talk a little bit more. So the growth allocation application was reviewed by GARC based on this package of evaluation criteria, and you should have that in your package. There was a community input meeting held. That's a required component. I attended that on behalf of the GARC, as did one of the other members. As a result of that, the Growth Allocation Review Committee put together a detailed findings for you all. That's dated February 3 from us to you, and that's as part of your report. So next, I'm going to go through those findings for you all. Okay, so, so they're emailed to you, but they're not printed in your packets?
It's in the binder.
It's in the binder? Okay.
We solved that.
Okay, next. So the growth allocation proposal is called Country Club Estates. It's for a growth allocation that is seeking to reclassify 40.72 acres of RCA, turn that to IDA, intensely developed, and 14.63 acres of LDA to IDA. This is at the Sparrows Point Golf Course. The site is the area in the box. The three colors that you see on the map, the red is existing IDA area, the yellow is existing limited development, and the green is existing resource conservation. So the green area you see inside that, that box labeled site is the bulk of the course. You'll see a little bit of yellow along the shoreline. That's where the golf club facilities, the clubhouse, the parking, tennis courts, that sort of thing, if you're familiar with the club at all, that's, that's where all their activities are. And that is in keeping with the mapping that the state requires. Golf courses do meet the definition of resource conservation areas, but all their facilities need to be mapped as limited development. So next slide. If the growth allocation request is successful, ultimately, the area will look like that and that portion of the site will be read intensely developed areas. You'll see to the north that there is intensely developed a budding portion of that. There is both LDA and IDA across the creek in a couple different directions from the proposed growth allocation. So the Growth Allocation Review Committee findings I'm going to go through, we have a bunch of categories, and that's what's at the top in italics. So the first category, the consistency with established county land use policies, plans, and initiatives, these are in more detail in the findings to you. I'll summarize them, I hope, briefly, but thoroughly for you. GARC found that the proposed development is consistency, is consistent with the policies, plans, and initiatives found in the Master Plan 2020, the Eastern Baltimore County Revitalization Strategy, and the Greater Dundalk Edgemere Community Conservation Plan. The development of the property will provide a mix of housing types that will supply, improve supply and diversity in the area, which should increase housing stock and help revitalization. There is a proposal that includes removing existing tennis courts and parking in the 100-foot critical area buffer along the water's edge, planting up a bunch of historically disturbed areas, providing natural shoreline restoration along a portion of the waterfront that is actively eroding, and managing stormwater runoff that will significantly enhance the property. In terms of adequate public facilities and services, there are adequate sewage and water availability to serve the proposed development. The site is currently on water and sewer and will remain so. A traffic impact study was reviewed and accepted by DPWT as part of the review of the development plan. The adequate school capacity was also reviewed and accepted as part of the development plan. And then we also have the Wise Avenue, Wise Avenue Volunteer Fire Department and Police Precinct 12 in close proximity to the site. In terms of fulfillment of unmet needs related to community and economic development policies in the master plan, the development of this project will provide a mix of housing types that should improve the supply and diversity of housing stock in the area near Trade Point Atlantic, which to date has created over 12,000 jobs. The housing types will include single-family detached, townhouses, and villas along the waterfront in the northern portion of the site. The anticipated ability of the project to comply with county development regulations, the project has already received development plan approval with the one condition that it obtain growth allocation. Functional compatibility with the surrounding area, the Development Plan Pattern Book approval confirms that the housing type mix and architectural design is appropriate for the property and compatible with the area. The Growth Allocation Review Committee determined that additional screening along Schoolhouse Cove within the 100-foot buffer would improve visual compatibility, particularly in regards to the residences across the creek. And then finally, traffic generated by the development will be primarily from the proposed residences, and the traffic impact study was reviewed and accepted by DPWT. Meeting or exceeding the critical area program goals, the critical area is based on three fundamental goals. The first is that impacts to water quality are minimized. In this case, the proposal will avoid wetland impacts. It clusters housing to retain a lot of existing vegetation. It's removing impervious surface at the water's edge. Shoreline buffers and developed woodlands will be planted. Buffers and woodlands will be put into permanent protective easement, and the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area 10% pollutant reduction requirement will be met. The second critical area goal to conserve fish, wildlife, and plant habitat will be met by permanently protecting and enhancing almost 107 acres of buffers and woodlands on site and also actively restore, restoring an actively eroding stretch of shoreline. The third goal of the critical area is a little more complicated, and I'm going to read it to you before we talk about that. The third goal says that the critical area is supposed to establish land use policies that accommodate growth and address the fact that even if pollution is controlled, the number, movement, and activities of persons can create adverse impacts. So what the committee was looking at or weighs the proposal is reducing number movement and activities of people that could create adverse impacts. GARC found that restoring 692 linear feet of actively eroding shoreline, planting all the buffers and the developed woodlands, clustering the houses, adding stormwater management to the site, dedicating no disturbance buffers and critical area easements, and posting signs along those areas would achieve that goal. And let me stop for a second. I've used the phrase "developed woodlands" a couple times. In the critical area, we have a blanket category of forest and developed woodland protection. Forest, I think you're all familiar with. It looks like a forest. Developed woodlands are probably most easily explained as areas that often are much more manicured, like what you see at a golf course with big trees and mowed grass underneath. But if we've got some canopy closure over top, it's called developed woodland and is protected separately than like individual trees just out in the golf course. So the resource protection objectives, there are 1.6 acres of forest and 6.83 acres of developed woodland that are proposed to be cleared. That will be offset by planting of 29.57 acres of forest on site and 6.3 areas of developed woodland that will be enhanced up to forest standards on site. There will be 11.37 acres of buffer on site that will be planted in forest vegetation. Right now, it looks more like developed woodland or not at all, no trees to the water's edge. All impacts within the 300-foot setback from the water will be mitigated at a three-to-one ratio on site. All mitigation will occur on site. And then finally, as you've heard me mention, a living shoreline restoration is proposed along the most actively eroding stretch of shoreline. This includes marsh creation and additional tree planting as well as placing this entire restoration in a permanent protective easement. Some additional resource protection objectives include minimal disturbance on steep slopes. It's a golf course. Most of the site is, is pretty flat. There's a small bit of minor grading for an emergency access lane and preparation for a storm drain outfall. The developed woodland, all the planted areas in the critical area buffers will be permanently protected. There are 94.99 acres in the critical area that will be protected and 11.73 acres outside the critical area on site for a total of 106.72. That's 39.8% of the overall golf course site that will be placed in permanent protective easement. Sorry. No stream crossings are proposed. There's no plant and wildlife habitat on site. The shoreline erosion work will abide by the time-of-year restrictions for white perch spawning. That's between March 1 and June 15. Resource enhancement objectives, the 10% pollutant reduction requirement will be met for the area by providing stormwater runoff for both the growth allocation area and the development area outside the critical area. Stormwater management will include submerged gravel, wetlands, bio swales, microbioretention areas, landscape infiltration, and cheap load of buffer. There is currently no stormwater management anywhere on the site. And finally, open spaces optimized by clustering houses in historically disturbed areas by using some of the existing cart paths to be pedestrian paths in the development, restoring the disturbed buffers in the developed woodlands, and retaining the golf course area beyond the growth application. 29.57 acres of forest and 6.3 acres of developed woodland will be planted and enhanced on site and placed in permanent protective easement, creating wildlife corridors that do not exist on site now. Two existing caretaker houses are on the site on the golf course. They are currently on septic system. They will be connected to public sewer. And then again, the living shoreline will help enhance the shoreline and stabilize that, preventing water quality issues in the creek. Design quality objectives, the, as I said before, the IDA growth allocation, it must be located either in an LDA or adjacent to an existing IDA. In this case, the growth allocation proposal meets both of those. It is partially existing LDA and it is adjacent to some existing IDA. Design quality objectives, the pattern book project, the pattern book for the project has been approved, and as I said, includes a mix of townhouses, single-family attached and single-family detached. It allows for the continued use of the Sparrows Point Country Club and the golf and social club will remain in use as well as permanent protection of buffers and easements. The unique features of the site that are optimized by planting the buffer historically are those that are used as part of the club, restoring the shoreline, retaining those existing cart paths for pedestrian use, and again, putting those planted areas and buffer areas in easement. Visual focal points that will be optimized will be adding additional native buffer plantings to screen the development from the existing developments across the creek. Public sidewalks will be provided along all the public roads, and there will be both pedestrian and vehicular access between the development proposal and the existing country club. The Growth Allocation Review Committee recommends that the planning board vote to forward the Country Club Estates Growth Allocation Application to the Board of Appeals for approval, subject to all the conditions that are listed in the February 3 Growth Allocation Review Committee report. Any questions?
Next, we have an opportunity to mirror comments from Patricia Malone, and then we'll have questions for both. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Patsy Malone. I've appeared before, many of you before, on this very same project several years ago. My client, Connor Gilligan, who is the president with Craftsman Developers, is actually asked to do the presentation, so I'm going to let you hear from him. And then after that, both he and I will be available for questions. And then I'm going to pass out a copy of his presentation. So I'm going to go this way.
Patsy, why don't you give it to Taylor?
I'm going to do it. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Connor Gilligan. My business address is 7524 W BNA Road, Glenburne, Maryland, 21061. I'm the president of the Craftsman Companies and the owner of Sparrows Point Country Club. Sparrows Point Country Club, the club, was co-founded in 1925 as an employee benefit for the workers of the Sparrows Point Steel Mill. In 1954, Bethlehem Steel Corporation purchased 270 acres of land to relocate the club to its current location off of Wise Avenue. They built a 27-hole golf course, Olympic-sized pool and pool house, 62-slip marina, tennis courts, and a 19,000-square-foot clubhouse, which are all currently in use today with the exception of five golf holes. When the steel industry began its downturn in the 1970s, less money was available from Bethlehem Steel to maintain the club. It led to the eventual sale to the club to the members at the time, back in 1985. At its peak, Sparrows Point Country Club had over 1,600 memberships, which, which has since declined to just below 500. The significant loss in memberships over the last four decades had left the club in poor financial position and unable to maintain its facilities. It was decided by the Board of Directors in 2015 that the only viable option to sustain the club was to redevelop 70 acres of land and create a resort-style community on the club's property by partnering with my company. The proposed development and sale of the new community known as Country Club Estates will be located on 70 acres of the total 270 acres of land and will provide two key financial components for sustaining the club into the future. The first financial component will be realized via proceeds from the residential sale within the new Country Club Estates community. These proceeds will give a cash, will give the club a cash infusion required to update most of its facilities throughout the club's retained recreational property. These improvements can include renovating the main clubhouse, pool house, locker rooms, pro shop, cart barn, relocation of maintenance facilities, tennis courts, and modernizing the golf course. The second financial component will be that every homeowner in the proposed Country Club Estates community will be a residential member of the club and pay a reduced membership through the newly-formed Homeowners Association, thus helping stabilize the immediate membership and grow its membership into the future. In the summer of 2020, in the height of COVID, the club was on, was club, the club was days away from bankruptcy. Given this undesirable position in November 2020, 94% of the voting members approved to sell the club and its property to my company and the affiliated entity known as CRD Golf. As a condition of the sale, we paid off $4.25 million in outstanding debt, immediately invested more than $2 million back into the club via tangible improvements, and most importantly, kept the club open and operating while employing the 90-plus associates at the club. Even though the club is no longer member-owned or operated, our company is still contractually obligated to reinvest at least $5.5 million back into the club. Country Club Estates presents a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to bring smart growth, redevelopment, sustainability to an existing use and a significant environmental uplift altogether into one property. Few existing and proposed communities in Baltimore County can combine these attributes while creating a special place for new residents to call home. Sparrows Point Country Club remains an important partner to the community of Dundalk. Although it's a private club, it does host dozens of local charity events, awards banquets, and golf tournaments each year. Additionally, it is home, it is a home golf course for several local parochial schools such as Curly High, Catholic High, Mercy High, as well as the practice course for Baltimore County's own Sparrows Point High School and Eastern Tech. Sparrows Point Country Club will celebrate its 100th anniversary next year, and with the completion of Country Club Estates, the club will be in a strong position to sustain itself for the next 100 years. I have a short presentation that goes along with that. Regina did an amazing job kind of putting it all together and getting into the nitty-gritty of the details. So my presentation will be more just kind of reinforcing what she just said. So this first slide that you, you see here is the entire property. It's all plus or minus 270 acres. You can see the development to the north of the property and then the retained golf recreational facilities to the south of the property. You know, it's, it's one single property, one SDAT property. So it's not separate. We're not, we're not using the 70 acres and trying to create a development there. The 70 acres to redevelop to the north of the property needs all 270 acres of property to make it work. And all of this, you know, the plan that you see before you was approved by Hearing Officer's Decision back in 2019. So the slide before you here is the signed development plan. A plan almost identical to this came before the planning board back in 2019 when you approved the variation of standards for this project. approved the variation of standards for this project. The changes that have occurred since 2019 to today are very minor. It was comments that we received from neighbors and some of the industrial users to the west of us. We lost another point of entry off of Gray's Road. But all in all, the plan that was before you was essentially that same plan that you're looking at up there. So this is the overall site mitigation that Ms. Esslinger referenced. You know, it's very simple. You know, dark green is existing forests up there. The lighter color green is enhancement of existing forest or developed woodlands, and the light green is all reforestation. That's totaling 35.87 acres of proposed planting and enhancement. The blue was the living shoreline portion of the project. The picture to your right is, is an example of a living shoreline project. So not only are we going to be preserving the shoreline, but we're also going to be creating a habitat in ways for little critters to get up onto the land, which they can't do right now. This is the proposed environmental easements totaling 106.72 acres held in protective easements. So currently, there are no protective easements on all 270 acres of the site. The area in red would be the critical area easements, and the area in green is the forest buffer conservation easements. My last slide here is, this is part of the GARC recommendation, was to do enhanced planting and screening along the shoreline that is where you see the, the two bars with the arrows pointing between. So this area is currently tennis courts and an open field to maintain at least 100-foot buffer off of Schoolhouse Cove. The tennis courts will be removed. The road that you see going through the property currently will be removed, and a majority of that area will all be planted and enhanced even to, to county standards to be more evergreen, so it's a complete blockage. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions from Ms. Malone, Ms. Esslinger, or Mr. Gilligan?
Mr. Gilligan, sorry. He'd answer to that, too.
Some questions. 106 acres is being conveyed to who or who is the county or county?
So they'll be owned by the country club, and it'll be an easement. So they will, to Baltimore County.
Can everyone step up to the mic, please, if you're speaking? Thank you so much.
So the easement will be conveyed to Baltimore County, to our department, to DEPS. But it will continue to be owned by Mr. Gilligan.
By the country. And the townhouses that I see that you talk about here, if you had to pick a price range for the builder, whoever that might be, what would they tend to run?
I'd say the smaller townhouses will be starting in the high threes, and the larger townhouses starting in the high threes to low fours.
Thank you.
And does that include the villas?
Excuse me?
The villas?
No, the villas will probably be $100,000 more than, villas are age-targeted, larger units for first-floor master.
And where on the map were, I mean, at one time, that was going to be like close to where the tennis courts currently are? So that's still the plan?
So here's the villas up here.
That's what I thought.
And the bulk of the townhomes, the mixed twenties and twenty-twos are here, and the singles round out this piece here, and they're either 40-foot-wide townhomes or 50-foot-wide townhomes depending on. Yes, the villa as well, yes. The villa, too.
Any other questions? Mr. Warren?
First, I want to thank you for stepping up and buying that property at a very difficult time. I would have left a mess over there, so thank you for doing that. To a punishment that's not a risk, and as a business person, I appreciate that. My question's always about affordability, and, you know, I understand buffers, and I know that when we approved this, part of that was part of the Chesapeake Bay issues that we had to deal with. But what would the cost of these properties, of these townhomes could that be? If you could develop more of the property, what is the impact to the citizens of Baltimore County because of some of these buffers and that that you're putting in? Are you getting what you think is the maximum you could have gotten anyways out of this property?
So when we really, really originally started this process back in 2015, the footprint of the development was smaller than what you see today. We came back to the club and said, this is how many units we can do, and it didn't generate enough money to pay off their debt and do all the improvements. So when we went through the, the PUD process and had a PUD community input meeting, it was determined that this was a, a good balance of what you could utilize in the club, but still keep a functioning, you know, world-class golf course and not have like a, you know, inferior golf course that nobody would play at. So, you know, the, the density kept getting reduced by the amount of buffers that were increased to stay out of all of the, you know, environmentally sensitive areas. Certainly, we could have done more townhomes and less single-family homes, but if you want to have a successful project, we're learning that having different product types, different price ranges is going to allow the project to absorb faster than if you had, you know, 520-foot-wide townhomes. So again, it comes back to balance. It was a good balance of all of the uses and kind of a product for everybody, whether you're a first-time homebuyer, a move-up buyer, or a, you know, a single-family homebuyer, age-targeted, moved-down, so, I mean, there's, there's something for everybody here.
Okay, Mr. Heckman, excuse, Mr. Heckman had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a couple of questions, if you'll indulge me. I, I think we all understand why the critical area law was, you know, adopted, and so my question is with Ms. Esslinger? Am I saying that right? Thank you. So is it the committee's opinion, then, that this is a better environmental solution than what exists now? In total, if you take the, what they're doing with the golf course and everything else, is this better than what's there now?
Yeah, we're getting a lot of plantings in areas that are not planted, are going to be permanently protected. There's no stormwater management on-site now. So the 10% pollutant reduction requirement that I spoke of requires you to reduce the pollutants coming off the site by 10% of the existing level. So it's not only treating what's there now, it's reducing it by 10%. So it's a big improvement in that regard. Again, the shoreline protection is a big deal. That's a big stretch of eroding shoreline that's creating a problem. So we're getting a lot of benefits that we don't have on the site now in terms of.
Yes, thank you. I, I was a little confused because I thought we were, you were just talking about the top portion, but all those facts and figures about 55 acres of forest being put in easement, that's for the entire golf course.
Yeah, so, so while their impacts are contained to the growth allocation site, it was really important to DEPS as we were reviewing the application that we tried to get as much mitigation for those impacts on-site as possible. We've got a pretty heavily developed shoreline in that part of the county, and there aren't a lot of places to do mitigation and plantings elsewhere. We had a site that the golf course could continue to function, and we could improve the environmental aspects on-site, and a applicant who was willing to do so.
So when the state came up with this growth allocation formula, whatever it was, I assume it was to give the county some flexibility in situations like this. I assume it was for, you know, some public purpose or public good. And what, so what are we saying the public good is in doing this?
So when.
I mean, I'd like playing golf, too, but I'm not sure a whole county likes that.
When the growth allocation was created, it wasn't part of the original draft of the critical area regulations, and the counties quickly realized that they were locked into these three designations, and you could never change them. So the General Assembly said, all right, you're right, we need to allow for some growth. And so they came up with that formula and said, but once you've got it, use it wisely. We're not going to tell you how to use it exactly. Now, subsequently, since 1988, there are a bunch of standards that the state has encoded, and that's in that package you have. It doesn't speak specifically to public good.
But I thought there was something in there about if, there has to be some public benefit.
That's in the PUD.
That's in the PUD.
That's in the PUD.
So what is the public benefit? I think I read something about sidewalk, we're providing, you know, in return for doing this, you're going to provide a sidewalk?
So.
Please step up to the microphone.
That may be more of the development team kind of question.
Yeah, go ahead. So I'm going to let Connor give you the details, but basically, in the evaluation of the growth allocation, part of it is, how are you going to do in community enhancements? So part of that is actually part of the application.
What's the public benefit? What, what is the community enhancement?
There's a couple of them.
I think there's two questions here. It's, it's community enhancement by the application of the growth allocation, and there's also the community benefit, which was part of the PUD.
Right.
So the community benefit that was part of the PUD is a, a series of improvements. It's a kayak launch at Battle Grove Park, an ADA-accessible kayak launch at Edgemere Senior Center. It's stormwater management improvement in off-site area that doesn't have stormwater management now. It is a proposed park to be built at Oakley Beach, which is the community on the other side of Wise Avenue. It is providing the public water service to a historical property called Todd's Inheritance out towards Fort Howard, and then also a financial commitment to relocate a War of 1812 monument that's in the Wells McComas Community Association, as well as the last is to contribute to a, a high school turf field project at Absco High.
And, and one last question. I know a lot of golf courses, because of the chemicals they use to, you know, keep the weeds off the greens and all that stuff, that, that I, I believe, and I was involved in a development like this a long time ago, but it, we found it had arsenic under the fairways. Have you guys tested for any of that?
Yes.
You got a?
Yeah, so we'll, I mean, areas that have a higher concentration of levels for residential use will be relocated to a recreational use to get below levels. So that's all done in coordination with Maryland Department Environment.
Thank you, Mr. Gilligan. Now I'd like to give Mr. Avery opportunity.
Thank you for being here and for really trying to initiate, actually to develop this area. Now, you've outlined all those things that you just told us for public good. Is it possible for you to put that in writing and submit to us? That way, we have it in writing in front of us, instead of going to search for it. Somebody asked me, what is the public benefit? I would like to show it to them. Is that possible?
Yes.
Any other questions, Mr. Avery?
So this is a special project for me because I grew up there, literally. My dad worked at Best Steel, and I spent a lot of time there as a kid. And the plan's wonderful. I'm a retired Baltimore County principal, and I'm looking at the school numbers. And just to be transparent, my daughter is the school nurse at Sparrows Point Middle High. It's severely overcrowded. So I'm looking at these figures on page 36 on Table 6B, and they're from 2019, so almost four years old in terms of the current enrollment at Sparrows Point Middle High. I know there's plans to build a new middle school down there, but I don't think they have found property yet to do that. And I'm looking at about 75 middle, high school kids that would be, that the, the property would generate once it's built and moved in. So I'm having a hard time, I guess, understanding how it, there's, where the committee found that there's no significant school impact, because there is.
So can I answer the question?
Mr. Go ahead.
So as part of the development plan approval process in Baltimore County, they do a, a adequate pub, public facilities school capacity test to determine the capacity in the schools being served directly by the project, as well as any adjacent capacity at the time that if redistricting, redistricting was to happen, would there be an additional capacity for schools that are adjoining those? At the time, in part of that approval, we met that test. So I, I understand the, the, you know, the capacity issue at Sparrows Point High at Patapsco, at Delaney. But what I do, what I can tell you now that I couldn't tell you four years ago, was that, you know, the, the 2023 budget that was adopted for Baltimore County is allocating $8 million to, to study, plan, and design for Patapsco High and Sparrows Point High. And that's, that's this fiscal year they're doing that. In addition to that, I know the county has allocated three-quarters of a billion dollars in school construction or renovation over the next six years. So if you look at this project and you look at the size of it, it's, by the time we put the model home up, we're looking at five years for full build-out, and that's, I got to start grading and all that. So, you know, in six years, you know, this project might not be built out all the way, but I think by, by that time, certainly the school issues with capacity now are going to be addressed via the, the design and planning, as well as the, as the subsequent improvements that are going to come as part of the six-year commitment.
Okay. Fair enough. Mr. Owen?
A couple of questions. I guess I'm still a little confused. The county had 462 acres of growth allocation. We have about 80 acres left. How much will this project take up?
55.35.
Okay, so, so it won't leave a lot left.
No, and it will use up almost all of our RCA acreage. About four acres left. About 20 left in the LDA.
And then I'm sort of curious, if I think about the county's shoreline as a whole, how much of it has gone sort of the Dundalk-Sparrows Point versus further up into the Middle River?
So at the time of the program adoption, probably at least half of that original 462 acres was put into projects that were already in the development pipeline. So we haven't had very many growth allocations since then. The last one we had before you was about five years ago, and that was in Essex, the Waters Landing Development. It was significantly smaller than this one.
In recent decades.
From there, no other ones. Oh, well, they're spending. Correct.
A question, I mean, I know the, the country club is currently privately owned, so will there be public access? I mean, is it still going to be sort of private property? Is it like a gated community? I guess I'm trying to figure out.
So we have two entrances off of Wise. We have the existing entrance, which is going to stay about the same spot. About the first 100 feet of that entrance is going to be public, and then beyond that is going to be private. So the road over the causeway, that will all remain private, and those villa homes will be on a private road. The, the other entrance, which is off of Wise, Constellation, all those roads will be public. It's like, like I had mentioned, every new homeowner in the community is going to be a residential member at the country club. And you ask yourself, what does a residential, residential member get? Well, residential member is going to be able to dine at the, at the clubhouse, is going to be able to, you know, play tennis or pickleball, is going to be able to use the kayak launch and go fishing. If they want to use the pool, then they have to become a social member. If they want to golf, then they have to become a golf member, and they'll get, you know, so, so their residential dues are, are already in their homeowners association dues, so they're not having to come out of pocket extra for that. But if they want to be a social member, then they can get charging privileges, and they'll pay a reduced amount because the residential membership is already going towards a certain percentage of that. But specifically for the public, public to come and pull up and golf, it, it'll still remain private.
And will the? And will the, the people, will they be owning the property? I'm, I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, if I were to buy a house, would I be buying the house?
Yep, so everything is fee simple ownership in, in the development. So every homeowner in there is going to be part of a homeowners association. That homeowners association will be part of a property owners association. The property owners association will manage both the, the country club activities, as well as the residential homes, you know, to be under one association. So if you're buying in here, will you have a voting interest in the country club to move a hole? No, you're not going to have that, but you will have access for perpetuity as long as it can remain viable and, and, more than it is now.
Thank you, Mr. Gilligan. Are there any other questions from the board?
I'll try to make this very brief because Scott asked my main question about what had been the projects that applied to this in the past, over the past 35 years. But I see for the golf courts, you're proposing 254 spaces for 70 trips a day. How does that work?
What's the question?
Parking, parking, yeah. It seems like a lot of impervious surface for 70 trips a day.
So I'd say on average, you're probably right, you know? So if, if it's a nice day, we'll get 90 rounds of golf. If it's a crummy day, we're going to get five rounds of golf, or no golf if it's really cold. The, the amount of parking space is needed because it is a clubhouse that has a large ballroom, and you're going to have special events and weddings. So when it was originally designed, they could have a 300-person wedding, and there's already a banquet kitchen there to support that. So really, the, the, the large amount of parking spaces that you see there is, is to accommodate, you know, those events. Yeah, and, and all that is existing, or actually reducing.
And also, do you have any plans for a marina there, or is it just going to be kayak launching?
So there's already an existing 62-slip marina that exists today.
And that will stay?
That will stay. It's, um...
I'm not a golf or boat person.
Here's, here's the marina.
You got a riding stable, we could talk.
And, and for clarification, all of the parking spaces, they exist today.
Ms. Wolfson, are you good? No, Scott, you had another comment? Are you good? Any other comments from the board? Mr. Avery?
Thank you. In addition to all the benefits to the public good, would you also estimate, what do you estimate as being the tax base for the county, taxes coming to the county?
Sure, I can give you that as well.
If you can include that in that list.
I provided a economic impact analysis as part of the GARC Committee. Look out, you know, the value of the homes right over in the, I can, I can send you that.
Thank you.
You're looking at taxes of $5,000 to $6,000 a year, and 300 houses as a rule of thumb, if you average it all, it was pretty substantial.
Okay, board members, are there any other questions? Okay, Mr. Perlow.
Guys, we've seen this, you know, Dundalk, Middle River, Trade Point, the greatest project in the state of Maryland to see over the last 50 years, maybe more. You've shown the logistics to be here in Baltimore County. You, I don't know, 12,000 numbers is right. I think it's much more than that by now, and will be by the time Trade Point's done. Those of us that were on the tour, the way it was down there on a bus, it was a slump. I mean, it was bad, the environmental stuff, whatever we saw down there. And now you drive in there, and it is the cleanest bit, most fantastic logistics site, and the jobs that are there. And we are doing a project at White Marsh right now, where the townhouses are starting in the 450 range, he's saying in the 375 to 425. So it's what's worth 4,000. You go into Andorondo County and even Prince George's County, now the townhouses are starting in the 500,000. These people that are going to work at Trade Point need housing to live in. It's the oldest part of our county, pretty much, you know, going back to 125 years, and there needs to be new development. If I take you up to Harker County and show you Bully Rock Golf Courts, 2,000 units and a beautiful, you know, two golf courts are going to come there. You know, it's one of the greatest developments in the world, and if Sparrow's Point is going to have that kind of reputation coming, you know, a place to be, I think this is what economic growth in the county will be.
Thank you, Mr. Perlow. Thank you very much. We're not voting tonight. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion to set a public hearing?
Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board set a public hearing for Thursday, March 16th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of receiving constituent testimony on the Sparrow's Point Country Club, Country Club Estates, growth allocation request for Chesapeake Bay critical area.
May I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, and I can't thank you all enough. You did a wonderful job. As a reminder, the public hearing in person on March 16th, there's a public hearing on March 16th. The board is tentatively scheduled to discuss and vote on the matter immediately following the public hearing. Thank you. Our next item this evening is the board's final recommendation and vote regarding the fiscal year 2024 capital budget, capital program for the fiscal year 2025 through 2029.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
It is almost 5 o'clock, and you're scheduled for a public hearing at 5 o'clock, so that matter may need to be deferred until after the public hearing.
And we will shelf that until after the public hearing. Thank you all for all your questions. Okay, so why don't we, right now, everybody take a short five-minute break, and then we will reconvene. Good evening. It's 5 o'clock. Board members, please come to your seats. Good evening again. Welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board, Public Hearing for the Landmark Preservation Parks and Recreational Plans for 2022. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm the Chair Nancy Hafford. I'll now, now call upon my fellow board members. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Avery? Ms. Brophy?
Aye.
Ms. German?
Aye.
Mr. Heckman?
Aye.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Hulipka?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. McGinnis? Mr. Perlow?
Aye.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson?
Aye.
Thank you all. At the February 16th, 2023 meeting of the Planning Board, Mr. Bob Smith and Mrs. Molly Pickle and Mr. Pat McDougal of the Department of Recreation and Parks introduced the Landmark Preservation and Parks Recreation Plan for 2022. Tonight, Ms., Mr. McDougal and Ms. Pickle, they are here to further present the plan for the board and the members of the public. We'll have an opportunity to speak. Please welcome Mr. McDougal and Ms. Pickle. Or Mr., just Mr. McDougal.
Good evening, Chair Hafford, Vice Chair Hulipka, and members of the Planning Board. First of all, I'd like to send the, I'm Pat McDougal, I'm sorry, Planner 2 for the Department of Recreation and Parks. I'd like to send the regrets, regrets of Acting Director Bob Smith, who is actually attending another board meeting tonight, the Board of Recreation and Parks meeting. So unfortunately, couldn't be in two places at once, though he's been doing that quite often as their acting director. So we're pleased to offer a presentation on the Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, which is a document that would ultimately become an addendum to Master Plan 2020, and then eventually Master Plan 2030. The document acts as an advisory document within the Department of Recreation and Parks, and prevents, well, presents a wide variety of information that Molly Pickle will go over. And with that, I'd like to introduce Molly Pickle, Planner 2, who will do the presentation this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman Hafford, and members of the Planning Board. As Pat introduced me, I'm Molly Pickle. I'm a Planner 2 with the Department of Recreation and Parks. And I'm here today to present the Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan, or LPPRP short. So I'm going to start off with a little bit of a review from the last time that I was here, going through the primary purpose of the LPPRP. In this plan, we compile the Parks and Recreation goals, objectives, and policies, particularly related to capital priorities. We assess the current state of recreation and parks through analysis of existing facilities, as well as public input. And this, as Pat mentioned, will serve as an addendum to Baltimore County's Master Plan and a guide for the county's Parks Preservation and Greenways Capital Program. And then this also importantly maintains Baltimore County's eligibility for the State of Maryland's Program Open Space, which has led to $147 million of funding since 2029, and it contributes to a statewide plan on parks and recreation. So some of the components of the LPPRP are an inventory of all the preserved lands. That includes parks, school, recreation centers, open spaces, as well as agricultural and conservation easements. We go through a level of service and equity analysis for parks and recreational amenities, such as athletic fields, picnic facilities, and playgrounds. And we also do a study of user demand, which includes that public input. And then based on that analysis, we develop recommendations for Parks and Recreation. And on the left side of this slide, I just want to point out that it shows the regional planning district groups that were used in the Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan. These were introduced in the 2017 plan and continued through to this plan. While census tracts may change, our recreation councils may change over time, these we're using as a consistent geography in order to make comparisons between our different plans. And so we've got them notated with, with just a couple of letters. So we've got, you know, the northern area, northeast, et cetera, et cetera. There are a few additional components of the LPPRP. We list our implementing programs, which is the funding sources for recreation and parks projects. We include a capital improvement plan, which goes through many of the projects that might fit into the goals that we set in the LPPRP. But it's important to note that that section is not binding, and that there are caveats to indicate that the plan is subject to availability of funding, as well as changes in recreational priorities. There's also detailing of natural resource and land conservation, which we prepared in collaboration with the Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability, as well as a section on agricultural land preservation, which we prepared with the help of the Department of Planning. We also submit data to the State of Maryland Department of Natural Resources, which helps them to update their information about what kinds of lands are preserved in this area when they're making statewide plans. So one of those first components of the LPPRP is the inventory of preserved lands. In this map on the right, you can see that each type of land is presented with a different color on the map. You'll notice a lot of yellow, especially in the northern part of the county, and those are the agricultural conservation easements, which make up the largest share of preserved land. That's 17.4% of county land. And followed by that is state parks, reservoirs, and then county parks. You'll see that also in darker gray is the urban area of the county, and lighter gray is the rural portion. You'll see many smaller parks and school recreation centers, especially within the urban area, but dotted throughout the county. So in all, including conservation and agricultural easements, 32% of the county's total land area is under some kind of preservation designation. Another component of the plan is the level of service analysis. And we did this with two methods. Shown on the right is the density of the amenities. We did this for a one-mile radius and a three-mile radius to see how well our amenities are spread throughout the county and how, how well our population is being served. And then also in the upper left, there is a graph showing the population served per amenity. In this case, it's playgrounds. And so in this case, actually, a higher population per amenity indicates a worse level of service. We indicate the county average, and this might help to guide us to direct certain amenities to places where, where there is an undersupply based on the population. We go through this for many amenities. I'm just going to show playgrounds up on the screen right now, but it goes through for athletic fields, ball diamonds, multipurpose courts, tennis courts, indoor recreation facilities. And pickleball was one that we introduced for the first time this year, given the dramatic rise in popularity. Then we, playgrounds, picnic facilities, trails per mile, water access points, as you can imagine, has an uneven distribution throughout the county, and then park sites as a whole. The Department of Natural Resources requires that we use the Park Equity Mapper, which was developed by the department, as well as partners, university partners. And their model considers several factors that might indicate social vulnerability, looking at, and then it also combines it with the distance to a park. So you'll see on this map on the right, darker areas indicate a worse equity score for parks. And our, our darkest area indicating the worst equity is sort of to the west of Baltimore County, with lighter areas to the north, and especially the northeast. And this is just one way of assessing park needs, along with the level of service analysis and survey responses. The state continues to develop this model, both in terms of refining the factors that they use for demographics, as well as including more and more of the data on our parks. So actually, our submission of data will help to improve this park equity mapper. For another portion of the LPPRP, we collect information on user demand, and we contacted our, we use county resources for this in terms of looking at existing plans and studies, sustainable community studies, the master plan. We also interviewed Ruck and Park staff about the needs that they see within their facilities, and looked at program participation statistics. And then for reaching out to residents, we did take input from other sources that were relevant to recreation, so from the master plan input process, as well as from the town halls. And then I accepted emails and phone comments. And then we had an online service and a public meeting, which I'm going to explain a little bit more in the next slide about how we reached people. So for our survey and public meetings, we did ask the, ask Recreation and Parks Council Presidents, Community Association Presidents, as well as members of the Baltimore County Council, to reach out to their constituents and share information about the survey and the meeting. And then we also shared through county resources, through a press release on the county website, through Baltimore County social website, social media, as well as Recreation and Parks social media, and flyers posted at recreation sites. And that survey was posted in English and Spanish. So I'm not going to go, so for the survey responses, we did look at the demographics of the survey respondents. We asked them to self-identify at the end of the survey. We also asked them to identify their zip code. So on the left side of the screen, you can see a map with darker areas indicating a higher response rate. So you can see that we have a really high response rate from the northern RPD group, and we have a much lower response rate from the western part of the county. So that indicates an area that we don't know as much about based on this survey, and so future projects might require more in-depth outreach to understand what the needs are. And on the right side of the screen, you can see a comparison of the Baltimore County population versus the percent of our survey responses. So the survey responses are showed with the... So the survey responses are showed with the dashed section, and then the percent of the county is shown with the orange. So you can see that there's a over-representation of white survey responses and under-representation of black or African-American survey respondents. So again, as well as for Asian respondents. So again, you can see that we do have gaps that were revealed in our survey responses, and that definitely indicates a need for some updates to the way that we were collecting surveys. And just thinking through for the next LPPRP or for future individual parks and recreation projects, we definitely could improve in using non-digital forms of output. And we do anticipate, you know, being able to have in-person meetings, which we didn't feel comfortable with at the time. And then, following the Department of Planning for some of their outreach, having surveys at the libraries and senior centers would also be an option to reach people who wouldn't be taking the survey online. And then I just wanted to mention that for individual projects, there's also other options to reach out to people. And this is modeled in part by the Oregon Ridge Park Master Plan, which employed some of these strategies listed below with in-person meetings at or near the project sites, as well as events that brought families to give public input, and informal surveys on-site, such as the bilingual ranger program at Oregon Ridge for the master planning process. And then also options to have poster boards or plans on display at some of their county sites. So I won't present every single question that was in the survey in the presentation today, but they're all in the report online. I'll be highlighting some key takeaways. In this graph, the bar on the left in yellow indicates the response from the previous survey for the previous LPPRP, and the bar on the right in green indicates for this LPPRP. So we can see both change over time as well as the, as well as the most popular amenities. So this is for amenities desired in greater quantity. And residents expressed an interest in linear recreation with trails and paths, as well as areas for unscheduled activities. Our top three are bicycle lanes, nature trails, and paved paths. And then followed by that is undeveloped green spaces. And then you'll see pickleball was not included in the survey previously. However, we did add it in for this one, so we don't have a comparison, but it is a highly popular item for, to be provided in greater quantity. And then you'll see a decreased interest in athletic fields from the previous survey to this current one. Yeah, so those are some of the key takeaways from the amenities desired in greater quantity. This graph indicates the budget allocations that we asked residents to make. So they were given a hypothetical budget of $100, and they allocated that to different parts of budget. And park acquisition was the most popular result, highlighting the importance of some of our recent land purchases. And then maintenance and repair is a high priority, likely reflecting some deferred maintenance. And the value, the value of linear recreation that was shown on the last slide was reinforced with this budget allocation. Yeah, and you can see a decrease in an interest in indoor recreation alongside of these other increases. So what follows from here is an example of the summaries we completed by the Regional Planning District Group, along with a list of the goals and objectives laid out in the LPPRP. These take into account the various forms of analysis aiming to meet residents' needs and advance recreational equity. I've combined the goals with some of the projects pulled from the Capital Improvement Plan presented in the LPPRP, as well as from some recent projects that we've completed. The Capital Improvement Plan and several of the projects presented here are preliminary and may change, but I wanted to show some of the connections between projects that we might pursue and the goals that we're setting. So in the full plan, we present a summary for the regional planning district groups for each of them, showing the survey results, as well as other suggestions for parks in the area that were submitted by residents or by park staff through our various means of public outreach. I put up a summary for the central RPD group, where we are now, showing the most popular responses for budget allocations for respondents from this area in orange, and the countywide average for each of those categories indicated with a black dot. So this, this RPD group is roughly follows some of the countywide averages with park acquisition and maintenance and repair being the top two items of interest. And these, so we go through these for each regional planning district group to identify where there might be differing recreational needs in different areas of the county. And from here, I'm going through the broad goals and recommendations. On the left, with an example of a project that relates to that. On the right, as well as in the caption, I'll indicate the regional planning district group in which the project is located. I'm putting up here the Bedford Road Park Site, which was actually already acquired, so it's not included in the LPPRP's capital improvement plan. However, I think that it's representative of broader goal, of the broader goal of land acquisition. This property on Bedford Road in the West Southwest RPD group will bring in additional recreational amenities to a densely populated area with a high desire for additional park acquisition and open space. And in the future, and then also just to indicate that it's also very close to the border with the West Central RPD group, which has an under-provision of parks, of local parklands. Yeah. And this just shows some of the analysis that is relevant to that acquisition, that it is very close to that border, so I'm looking at both of those RPD groups. Both of them rated the amount of undeveloped open space as relatively low, with an average rating of 2.8 and 3 out of 5. And in addition, the West Central has a much worse provision of local parks compared with the county average. Respondents from the West Southwest, where the new acquisition is located, rated park acquisition as a greater budget priority compared with other areas in the county. And while we're interested in park acquisition, we also want to give attention to our existing parks. And so our second goal that we're listing is to develop, enhance, and rehabilitate parks to meet the recreational needs and demands of residents of all ages and abilities to attract visitors and to support organized recreation programs of the partner of Recreation and Parks Councils. And the example that I included is for Rockdale Park, which will, their upcoming renovations will improve paths, pavilions, and playground facilities to help meet current demand. The next goal is to enhance the public access to the natural environment, including the Chesapeake Bay and its tributaries, and to seek to increase public knowledge of and appreciation for nature. And I've included a map of Oregon Ridge, where we plan to have trail improvements, as well as a picture of Rocky Point Park, where there is also a project to enhance the path to the shoreline. Both of these will give Baltimore County residents greater access, improved access to our great natural resources. The next goal is to work with Baltimore County's Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability to improve the environmental conditions at the county's parks and recreation sites, and to help protect and preserve the natural environment. This is a picture of a very recently completed project at Chesterwood Park, which improves an eroded section of the shoreline and also adds a soft launch for canoes and kayaks, which is a great bringing together of environmental preservation with recreational access. Our next goal is to pursue alternative means for providing recreational opportunities through partnerships with other agencies and organizations. In the images on the right, you'll see a new story trail at Northwest Regional Park, created in collaboration with the Baltimore Public Libraries. And on the right, a new field at, Fields at Renaissance Parks in collaboration with, with a partnership with the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation. Then we would like to expand opportunities for residents to participate and experience arts and cultural programs and events, and work to preserve historically and culturally significant sites for the appreciation and enjoyment of county residents and visitors. This is Benjamin Bannaker Museum, which will receive multiple upgrades to enhance historical education and about history and culture at the site. Next goal is to continue to partner with resident, with affiliated resident organizations and participate in various partnerships in an effort to enhance public recreation access for Baltimore County residents and visitors. And this shows a model of Hazelwood Skate Park, which is an upcoming project to have a new skate park within Baltimore County in collaboration with the Baltimore County Skateboard Council. And that brings us to the future uses of the LPPRP. It will enhance the State of Maryland's Department of Natural Resources' understanding of and the data on Baltimore County's recreational resources, which helps in its statewide land preservation and recreation plan. It helps us maintain eligibility for, it maintains eligibility for program open space funding, and in our applications for program open space funding, we do reference LPPRP goals. And will guide decision-making by the Department of Recreation and Parks about acquisition, park rehabilitation, and development. And then it also aids in other, aids other Baltimore County departments as an amendment to the Baltimore County Master Plan. And as a review of the timeline, we've already submitted to the Department of Natural Resources and received comments. We submitted a revised draft responding to those comments, and the plan is to have a planning board vote at the next meeting, followed by a resolution by the Baltimore County Council, at which point we would resubmit to the Department of Natural Resources to have it fully complete. And here is access to the full plan, which includes much, much more.
Thank you. Wonderful job again. Board members, do you have any questions before we start our public hearing? Mr. Warren?
Yeah, there was a slide that you did that showed like parks, they were dark and black, the circle.
No, so indicated with the orange dots is the locations of the playgrounds, and then the darker areas are places where there's a high density of playgrounds. So darker areas actually have a better provision of playgrounds. Yeah.
Mr. Pirlo?
The graph that showed that fields aren't a priority, we did this last survey, I'm a little surprised, I guess, with that. There's not enough fields for Little League and football and everything else, and the school would need more fields as well. Any feedback from the survey that explains why that would be?
I do think that we did, we had a different approach of outreach for the survey in this year than the previous time that it was distributed. I think that there was a larger portion of respondents were coming from, or were contacted through the recreation councils, which are heavy users of athletic fields. So I think that we reached a larger segment of the population. So I think that, you know, we still see athletic fields as relatively, you know, as a good number of respondents wanted athletic fields in higher, in higher quantity. However, I think that we just reached people who weren't involved in organized sports. So I think that we reached more people who were involved in sort of casual recreation on their own with walking paths and cycling.
One other question, I don't know if you can answer this, but I see the picture of the skate park, and whatever I, the risk sort of for the county, when they use a facility like that, not just walking trails or something, not going to have an accident happen as easily. Do they sign releases? Are they allowed to use it for open, for open use? What does the county require for potential liability of some child falling and whatever it is?
I do know that our skate parks have ours, and this one will as well. I don't believe that they sign a release to use them, but they, we have three currently?
Actually, yeah. And the closest equivalent to this would be the Landstand Skate Park. And it is like this, it's a skateboard, and it's one of the oldest ones in continuous use in America, as a matter of fact. And there's remarkably few injuries. Adorable, I don't know whether skateboarders are, you know, are a different breed, but yes, it's kind of funny because we did a newer era of skate parks, which are on the courts, and we got very restrictive with safety requirements and signing releases. And guess who really didn't want to use them? Right? And so we've learned that lesson. It's something that is really a trend nationwide, which is sort of, you know, use at your risk sort of thing, and we do not have them, you know, staffed like we did with the court-based skateboard parks, and tends to be more popular that way.
So on one of the earlier slides, you mentioned over 30% of the county's land is under some sort of recreation. And I know you alluded that obviously we have requirements with the county to get the state open state funding as well. What is the percentage that's required by the state? You know, like are we, are we above what we need to do, or are we below, or where are we at that 30%?
Oh, okay. So we still do want to acquire more land for parks. We, the state had a hard and fast standard that they used to use. However, that is not the current case. So with, with this plan, we are still under the desired level of parkland.
I'd like to add to that. So one of the things, one of the big distinctions about the Land Preservation, Park and Recreation Plan, it's a little bit of a misnomer. The plan is entirely tied to program open space. So it guides our acquisition program, but for instance, those ag preslands, program open space cannot be used for those. All of the land that is acquired for the park program must be open for, you know, for public use and access. And as Molly was saying, the state used to have some standards. They used to have a 30 acres per thousand population, which was a really a statewide type of standard. However, prior to the last LPPRP, the state did a lot of research to find out why that is, and they could never figure out or find out why. So there is no separate universal holy grail when it comes to how much parkland you need. I, I kind of liken it to roads. And I say, you know, departments of public works never, when transportation aren't asked, how many miles of road do you need countywide? And I think DNR has come to that realization. Some counties will use percentages of the overall landmass for park needs. Some will use number of acres per thousand, like Baltimore County used to. Some will use proximity-based analysis, like a walking distance from the populace. I know that our friends, Neighbor Space, are big advocates for that, but there's no universal standard, nor does the state require that, you know, that we have a hard and fast generic standard within the LPPRP.
I was just going to follow, and I was just going to say, so you're separating, so this is not like the ag, as you're talking about, this is basically hard and programmed in this.
That's correct. And as part of the standards, we are required to show all of the different types of land that is preserved in one manner or another.
Thank you.
Can you explain why the department chose to build an indoor facility on a farm field several miles south of Hereford, as opposed to building one on the senior center site north of Hereford, between Hereford and a high school? The further site is about 15 miles away from my place, as opposed to about eight or nine.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the site where Hereford Senior Center is going to be gone isn't anywhere near large enough for, for enough for for ball fields.
How not ball fields, I'm talking about the indoor facility.
Indoor facility. Actually, under the current plan, it is going to be a multi-use facility. We were just actually discussing that earlier this week with the county executive and aging. So the current plan is to do indoor facilities at the new, you know, combination of recreation and aging, similar to what we have at Sweet Air Park.
Thank you.
So there is room there to build that facility.
Yes, sir.
Board members, if you can have any other questions, but this is a public hearing and I think we have people that have signed up from the public that would like to speak. But are there any other questions right now? If not, we will call upon all of you that have signed up and completed the signing sheet located in the lobby just to speak on this topic in the order that you were registered. Ms. Bensley, do you have the list?
Yes, first up, we have Jeff Budnitz.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a multi-decade Wreckin Parks volunteer on the nature side. I'm on the executive board of the Lake Roland Nature Council. I also volunteer at a number of other nature sites where we bring equipment from our park to help maintain those other parks. I'm very familiar with people loving parks to death, literally during the pandemic. That might have tied in with some of the demographic data or other survey data where people became very park focused versus rec activity focused. I do believe there is always that chronic shortage of fields as my children played on the fields. I'm here just to compliment Pat and Molly. I know it was a very heavy lift. I know that there are people that are behind me that have a myriad of opinions and other additional input. I went through the entire plan. I don't sleep much and I thought it was very thoughtful and really hit upon a number of key points that I see every day when I go to other parks to volunteer. So I just wanted to commend that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much for your time. Next speaker.
Rob DeFord.
That's all good to go.
Good evening, Chair Hafford, members of the planning board. My name is Rob DeFord. I'm the president of the Baltimore County Land Trust Alliance, known as BCLTA, which supports the preservation activities of land trusts in Baltimore County. Land preservation is the voluntary conservation of farms and open space using easements to place restrictive covenants upon the land, the only way to protect land in perpetuity. Baltimore County has just passed the milestone of 70,000 acres preserved. Public funding for land preservation typically receives greater than 70% voter support. Baltimore County land trusts advise landowners interested in preserving their property. Land trusts hold easements and are responsible for seeing that their terms are upheld. BCLTA works closely with the county's Department of Planning to achieve the conservation goals in the master plan. In granting an easement on their land, property owners are making a significant contribution to society. The price they receive is well below the market price for development. So what motivates them is not profit, but respect for their land. Benefits include open space for recreation, fresh local foods, a vibrant rural economy, clean air and drinking water, habitat for sensitive species, and protection of forestland, among others. All these benefits come at a minimal cost of government services. Conserved land is not idle land. Working farms contribute over $500 million to the county's economy. I urge the members of this board to support continued funding for BCLTA and for county land preservation programs. I also ask you to support office space for BCLTA at the Ag Center on Shuan Road, since land preservation programs are critically important to area farmers. I own and operate Boardy Vineyards on our Preserve Family Farm in northern Baltimore County. During the pandemic, many people came to Boardy seeking respite and in a rural setting. In the same sense, the green open spaces in the northern part of our county enhance the quality of life for all of our citizens, and I urge you to support them. Thank you very much. I'm open to questions. And could I point out, not testifying on behalf of this issue, we have Michael Sonnenfeld, Vicky Collins, the Land Preservation Trust in Baltimore County, and Jones, the executive director of BCLTA are with me tonight, but will not be making remarks. Happy to answer any questions, Matt.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Renee Hamidi.
Good evening, Chair Hafford, members of the planning board. Renee Hamidi, representing the Valley's Planning Council. Since 1962, BPC has been working with Baltimore County to promote smart zoning and land use policies. When we started out, there was just a few, there were just a few zoning classifications. It would have permitted the equivalent of one, at least one residence per acre countywide. Baltimore County includes more than 400,000 acres. Baltimore County uses land preservation programs as part of a deliberate strategy and long-term commitment to maintaining agricultural land and supporting the agricultural industry. There are many public benefits to protecting ag land, including protecting the water supply source for more than a million people, soil conservation, biodiversity, wildlife habitat, scenic vistas, flood control, historic preservation, cultural heritage, and a diversified economy. Less development also means less infrastructure is required, so the county doesn't have to pay for more schools or roads. Land preservation programs purchase or accept donations of development rights. Only occasionally is the land itself purchased. Most public land, like parks, is not protected by conservation easements. So the county could theoretically take a park like Oregon Ridge, which is not preserved with a conservation easement, change its zoning, and subdivide its thousand-plus acres into however many residences it likes. Land preservation programs, whether funded by the federal, state, or county governments, preserve property in perpetuity while zoning can change. You may not see the effects of land preservation because when it works, nothing changes. Everything looks the same. But it takes a lot of work and money and effort to keep things looking the same. The threats never stop. Please support continued funding of land preservation.
Thank you for your time. Ms. Bensley, any other speakers?
Yes, three more. Ned Worthington?
Thank you all very much for the opportunity. I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. I did want to talk and one to thank Mr. Ford and Ms. Hamidi for their comments, but also talk a little bit about land preservation. We've talked a little bit tonight about public access and recently there was a vote, a five-four, a tight vote about limiting, you know, the use of easements to lands with public access. And it seems to me that that's a threatening vote in a way, because to answer your question earlier, Ms. Brophy, we are behind in land conservation. We've got, you know, less than 1% of the capital budget allocated to it. We're not on par with with our neighboring counties or other areas of the state. And the reality is, if we're really valuing those things, water filtration, you know, outdoor open space, food sources, you know, and the list goes on, we need to get serious about land conservation. And the reality from this is the LPPRP document, you know, these, you know, preserve sufficient land to protect agricultural resources. Pardon me. You have, you have, you know, foster the agricultural industry, foster regional cooperation for agriculture. Those are things that take place on private land. Private land agriculture, certainly no one is arguing against having public access and having, you know, recreational funds used for purchasing public assets, but those easements are critical to maintain a leading role of planning in this county nationwide. And particularly, you know, what we have here, which is preserve land close to an urban area that is very rare in the country because of overdevelopment and is very rare and very valuable to county employees. So I'd like to thank you all, but please do maintain and continue that private, private land easements. They're absolutely critical to maintaining, you know, rural legacy and the rural economy we have.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have Larry Fogelson.
Good afternoon, Larry Fogelson. I'm a member of the board and executive committee of Neighbor Space. I have a background with the state managing the LPPR program statewide, admittedly, a while ago, but Pat and I go way back and I thank you, Pat, for the Neighbor Space plug. If it was a plug, I don't know. You can, I've got pages of recommendations, two pages of recommendations to offer to you. I hope they're not too critical or intended to be to be positive and looking more looking forward to the next rounds of the LPPRP and even perhaps sooner. I won't, I'm not going to get through two pages of this stuff in one minute, but you can read this on your own. I thought it a bit odd that this, I know it's a state mandate, but that the, this is popping in before the, just before the next master plan pops in. So I've recommended, we've recommended revisiting this after the master plan is done, rather than just changing the date in the LPPRP after that happens. I think it needs to be reviewed in the context of whatever the new master plan says to bring it, bring them into alignment. Current LPPRP is the same basic template that has been used for decades at the county and Wreckin Parks. So we're suggesting that a review of that template take place to bring things into greater alignment with modern thinking about integrating recreation and parks and environmental protection and equity and all of those things. The other thing I'll highlight is it's hard to discern a connection between the needs and the capital program. Capital program just seems to be popped in at the end and there's no discussion of how that meets all of the great needs and analysis that was carried out in the plan. We're looking to connect those two dots more clearly and perhaps more accurately.
Thank you so much for your time.
May I ask, may I ask a question? So do I understand correctly from your handout that Neighbor Space recommends a more than 25% increase in the amount of land preserved for committed to land preservation?
I think that was something.
Agricultural goal.
I think that was something that the state was, if I understand correctly, that the state is negotiating currently with the county to.
Raise that from 80,000 to 105,000 acres, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Next speaker.
Finally, we have Marsha McLawrence.
Thank you very much for your time. Just waiting through reading the LPPRP, the hearing tonight. I'm on the board of Neighbor Space. I'm also on the board of the Tapsco Valley Heritage Area and on the steering committee for Baltimore County. And I waited through the LPPRP and I think there's a lot of wonderful things in there. I think the social equity analysis was very helpful. It was something that was new and different. I think one of the main concerns I have is that there's never enough money to do all the things that everyone would like to do. And there are no priorities set in this. There are no short, medium, and long-term priorities. And while the equity analysis was very helpful and said that the Southwest and the West had less equity in terms of the facilities available to them, there's nothing that shows up in here in terms of trying to even that out. And for each of the RPDs, there's a long list of projects, but no sense of what the priorities are, short, mid, long. So if you were in any of those districts, you'd have no way of knowing what was going to come your direction. And so I guess I'm suggesting you might think about, in the county, you might think about trying to set some priorities, short, mid, and long, and then doing an annual report. Wreckin Park unfortunately would get stuck with doing that. Just how are we doing? So that when each capital budget and each town hall gets held, there's some way of understanding how we're doing and then how do you allocate all these limited resources?
Do you have any thoughts on if they could do those areas to maybe spur some involvement in getting involved?
That's a challenge in Neighbor Space. We always have trouble getting people involved with any of our communities. And so you really have to kind of reach out in different communities to find out who's an activist. There's almost always, you know, a few that are activists and then how do you try and pull those people in? In some places, there are people who have been actively involved with sports and, you know, the rec league programs. In other places, you know, you may have to look to other organizations, churches, schools.
Thank you for your great suggestions. Okay, are there any further, no, no further, any further questions from the board? That's a first.
We're getting tired.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. I guess we'll backstep here a little bit. The next item for this evening is the board's final recommendation and vote for the fiscal.
Should we close the public hearing?
Oh, we're closing the public hearing. Does anybody have a problem with that? Thank you all. Okay. All right. The next item for this evening is the board's final recommendation and vote regarding the fiscal year 2024 capital budget, capital program for the fiscal year 2025 through 2029. I will now hand things over to my esteemed colleague, Vice Chair Scott Halipka, who's been chairing the CIP committee. Mr. Halipka.
Okay, so I'm there to sort of summarize where we are on the capital improvement projects. The planning board capital improvement budget and program process for fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2029 began on October 20th, 2022, with a citizen input meeting held before the planning board. The board heard from citizens verbally and in writing who expressed their concerns relating to capital improvements for their communities. County Executive John Oshewski made a presentation to the planning board on January 19th, 2023. In his remarks, county executive Oshewski noted that the budget process is more transparent and open with the continuation of the town hall meetings in every council district and the open budget platform. Agencies have worked with the chief sustainability officer to include resiliency and efficiency in their capital project requests, and agency presentations were required to address equity in their projects. The planning board committee on the capital budget and program had a series of meetings in January and February of this year, during which representatives from the Baltimore County agencies presented their capital budget request. The Department of Planning presented the staff CIP recommendations to the committee on February 16th, 2023. After much discussion, the CIP committee accepted the staff recommendations for the FY 2024 capital improvement and five-year program and suggested recommendations to be included in the board's cover letter to the director of the Office of Budget and Finance. That cover letter was sent to the board on February 23rd, 2023 and is included in your meeting material tonight. Tonight, we have the opportunity to further discuss the capital budget and five-year program and the presented transmittal letter. The transmittal letter includes the following project requests. Should additional funding become available as part of the capital budget and program? First, additional funding in Department 204 Storm Drains for storm water management facility planning, design, and construction in flood-prone areas of Owella. 2.5 million in additional funding in Department 205 Streets and Highways for the construction of sidewalks along Old Court Road from Greenspring Avenue to Stevenson Lane and Stevenson Lane to the I-695 and Seven Mile Lane. 500,000 in additional funding in Department 205 Streets and Highways for planning to provide safe access across Charles Street to Lake Roland. Additional funding in Department 209 Community Colleges to the maximum amount, which would be matched by state dollars. And additional funding in Department 213 Schools for an expansion of the indoor facilities at Hereford High School by adding additional gym space. Board members, now if there are any questions, comments, or concerns with the transmittal letter, which I hope you've all had a chance to read. Mike?
Each year when we vote on the budget, we have an opportunity to question various departments on their priorities for the coming year. We have the ability to add items and delete items from the budget and vote on issues we feel important to the citizens we represent. we feel important to the citizens we represent. Some years, the various departments do not respond to our concerns or feel they are not important enough to be added. If the concern to the voters in some areas that we represent are not listened to, then why do we bother to go through this process? Are the areas that have the most influence or the loudest voices the ones that are being listened to? I feel the voters in northern Baltimore County are often ignored. When Hereford High School was being considered for replacement, the cost was $120 million. It was replaced, the existing building was remodeled for a cost of about $48 million, quite a savings. We are currently considering several hundred million dollars per school to replace several high schools in the county. Compare that cost to what we had, what we did several years ago. The, currently, we have need and space to expand indoor facilities at Hereford High School now. They, when they did the initial planning, they did not consider the expansion from a middle school combined to a high school, where the amount of extra, after-school activity has exploded. The demands are far exceed the ability or the facilities that we have. Now, we are recommending, several years ago, a member from Dundalk felt there was a need for a certain item at the high school. We voted to include that in the budget, and it was included. It wasn't, it was a recommendation to add to the budget, and it was done. I don't recall us doing that for a number of years now. We've been using the term recommending. If we have the ability to include in the budget certain items, I would like to do that for the facility at Hereford High School, to include facilities adequate enough to plan and develop additional gym space. And I feel we have the ability to do that.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
Second.
What is the motion? What is the motion, please?
Motion is to, to include in the budget.
Are you adding or does subtracting?
I amend it to that space, to that, sort of just recommending, to actually add to the budget for so, some money for to do that. You can add it, and word it however you want.
Are we able to, I guess, this is never, are we able to add without subtracting? I mean, that would add to the total. Are we able to add to the total without subtracting from something else?
The legal role of the Planning Board is to make a recommend, set of recommendations to the county executive. And then, building upon what Ms. Meacham presented at the last meeting, this would be, if additional, should additional monies be available, that these items would be included. And just as the Board has recommended otherwise, the adoption of the budget that was presented, including the $2 million additional for IT, these would be additional items that are not now in the budget. But again, the role of the Board, legal role of the Board is to make recommendations to the county executive.
Are you saying they cannot insert budget items?
Well, if other items were removed to retain the budget that was presented, then it would still be a recommendation. It would still be a recommendation to the county executive that X be removed and Y be added.
Well, it could be items that are on the budget, it could be delayed, or, as you well know, a budget is not a precise number. It is a recommendation of what they expect the revenue available is going to be. It could be more than, it certainly is always less than what they, it's, they make sure it's not over what they expect.
Mr. McGinnis, you either have to decide to pull funds from some other project or just ask if there's a-
From a specific project or from just general-
A specific project. Are you, are you willing to make that recommendation?
Well, the budget has many items on it. I don't have a specific item in the budget to replace, but I would say we cannot add, you're saying we cannot add to it?
No, we can't, Mr. McGinnis.
We can make recommendations, Mr. McGinnis, and even, even the, if there were no additional items in the transmittal letter, the Board is still in a position legally to make a recommendation. So this would be a recommendation, and the way we framed it, based on historically the way it's been done at the Board, is that should additional funds be available? Now, if you wish to make an amendment, if you want to change it and say, please remove X dollars from the budget so that we can, we will pay for this additional gym, then that would be another way to approach it.
If sufficient, if sufficient money is available, they could be added.
Yes, sir. That's, that's how the-
Without, without naming a specific item.
But we don't know what the price is even.
I've got a suggestion. Each of the four or five points, awful recommendation that the Board recommends.
Thank you.
I think it needs to say, the Board recommends adding funding. I would suggest that we change this in deference to our, our member, that we ask that, I'm going to use a million dollars for planning, not going to get it built the first year. It's going to be planned like any other school in the school board. So based on what I've seen, other things cost for planning at that point, that's a nice part, I might make another million next year.
Okay, Mr. McGinnis, are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I would recommend.
We recommend that there's, if they're, they can find it, there's an ex, there's a million dollars for planning for a Hereford High School. Is that good for you?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll take-
I appreciate that.
I guess I'm a little confused here, because in here, it says the Board recommends adding funding to Department 213 Schools for an expansion of indoor facilities at Hereford by adding additional gym space. So-
So what would be adding to that is the phrase, adding $1 million in funding?
For planning.
For planning.
Which Department 213?
Mm-hmm. So we're suggesting that they come up with money, cash, to begin planning, different than, we had a public meeting in Pike School, and they told us what all the planning costs were going to be, and they're spending that first, and then hopefully the sidewalks will come, and hopefully someday we can get to the gym while you're still here.
So-
One step back.
Okay, are we ready to move, folks? Any other questions?
Me.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Halipka.
Wayne, are you comfortable with that modification to the, okay?
Yes.
Well, that's a good-
I'll make that.
Okay, so the change is that we, we changed the wording to that the Board recommends adding $1 million in funding for planning to Department 213 Schools for an expansion, dot, dot, dot.
Do we need a roll call on that, Mr. Lafferty?
I believe a question will be just-
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Great. Be it moved. Any other questions before we move on? Better not be.
Madam Chair, just to clarify that it, yes, Stevenson Lane is the road here, not the one over in Pike School. So, so it reads Stevenson Road, not Stevenson Lane, and revised transmit. I think that's technical.
Todd.
I'm just trying to move the law for you.
Well, the transmittal letter itself is a separate item, and, but I appreciate the clarification on this from McGinnis's point, so I think this is fine.
Okay, are we ready? Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board approves the FY 2024 capital budget and capital program for FY 2025-2029 with the accompanying cover letter as rec-
As amended.
Amended, as amended to add the Harf, the Hereford Gym, $1 million towards planning. All right, as rec-
You said 2025, the letter here says 2024. There's one question.
It says the capital program FY, Howard, just be quiet for a second. An accompanied letter as recommended by the capital budget and the program subcommittee for transmittal to the Director of the Office of Budget and Finance.
Second.
Planning Board, are we clear?
I'm just reading the letter, Miss Chairman, that says 2024.
That's what I said, the FY 2024 capital budget.
You said 2024.
Okay.
It's, it's, Mr. Perlow-
Howard.
Mr. Perlow, it is, it's, it's the 2024 capital budget and the capital budget program-
If it gets his way, it's going to be 2025 also. Howard.
Hey, just want to make sure it's like-
Please take his mic away from him. Happy. Thank you.
And 27, and 28.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right.
All right.
All right, now, thank you, and now we have a motion and a second. We'll have a roll call of the vote. When you hear your name, please say aye or nay. Mr. Avery.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Oh, Ms. Hafford, you're supposed to read this.
Okay. Ms. Hafford.
Oh, yeah, aye.
Mr. Hackman.
Aye.
Mr. Heidel. Uh, Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlow. Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Warren. Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Oh, Ms. Proffey, sorry. We don't have it in alphabetical order. Thank you, the motion carries.
Okay, good job. We're not done. Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the County Council following our last meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 523 Vacant Structures for the purpose of defining certain terms, establishing a vacant structure designation, providing for the applicability of vacant structure designation, providing for the notification of a designation to the owner, permitting inspections of designated vacant structures, providing for the reconsideration of a vacant structure designation, requiring the Director of Permits, Approvals, and Inspections to compile and maintain an inventory of designated vacant structures, and generally relating to vacant structures. Bill 6-23 Zoning Regulations Minimum Width, Modernizing Town Home Construction Act for the purpose of establishing the minimum width for group homes, permitting certain widths of group homes in certain areas and under certain conditions, and generally relating to group houses. Resolution 2-23 Development of Greater Middle River Design Guidelines. Resolution requesting the Baltimore County Department of Planning to acknowledge and allow the Essex Middle River Civic Council to develop the Greater Middle River Design Guidelines in conjunction with the Baltimore County Department of Planning, and upon completion be subject to adoption by the Baltimore County Planning Board for additional, for addition to the Comprehensive Manual of Development Policies. And that concludes the report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bensley. Well, this is the conclusion of our agenda, and I cannot thank Mr. Lafferty.
Yes, Madam Chair, I just want to publicly thank Jennifer Meacham and her team for the work that they did on the capital budget, and also the Chair for his work as we went through the last work session. I think everybody here recognizes it is a lot of work to do the analysis, to come forward to, to the Board and to field the questions, and to understand really the range of concerns as is reflected in the transmittal report. So I just really want to thank Jen and her team for getting us to this point.
Well, Mr. Lafferty, you just stole the words right out of my mouth. That was going to be my part. But Jen and the rest of the Planning Department, we, we know how thin you've been stretched, and we greatly appreciate everything you do. Understand, we don't take it for granted. Sometimes, some of the people on this Board get a little out of control. I'm not going to mention any names, but we are very, very grateful. So, thank you. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Back on.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no one better oppose.